Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person, and thank you to all of you who are here, and also online, or they can view us on burnsvilleamn.gov/meetings, or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the council agenda packet. The first item on the agenda is the announcements and proclamations. And tonight is a special night, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, June 4th at 5:30 p.m. and Tuesday, June 18th at 5:30 p.m. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, June 11th at 5:30 p.m. All council meetings are held here in the council chambers, unless I would announce that it would be in a different location. And tonight, we have four proclamations. And we're going to start out first with the Emergency Medical Service and National Public Works Week and the National League of Cities. And then we'll leave the big one for the end because we want to recognize our students, and I'll talk more about that later. And I'll do the proclamations from that side. Members of the council, first, and citizens of Burnsville and guests. Our first proclamation is Emergency Medical Service Week. And it's great to see all of our EMS. Actually, you guys are a little bit higher than that because you're fire paramedics. And that's a higher standard, but this is Emergency Medical Service Week, and thank you for your service to the community. Whereas, emergency medical services are a vital public service. And whereas, the members of the Burnsville Fire Department are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and 365 days. Whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas, the emergency medical service system consists of emergency physician, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedic firefighters, first responders, educators, administrators, and others. Whereas, the members of the Burnsville Fire engages in specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, the 50th anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week, honoring our past, forging our future. And it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of our emergency medical providers, Burnsville Fire, by designating and celebrating Emergency Medical Service Week. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim in the City of Burnsville, the week of May 19th through the 25th, as Emergency Medical Service Week proclaimed this 21st day of May 2024. And Chief, gentleman is going to be receiving this proclamation. And Chief? I think we should have all of our personnel who is here so we can take a picture.
All right, can everyone see my lens? All right, ready? Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
The next proclamation is National Public Works Week. Whereas, Burnsville is committed to responsible stewardship of assets to allow our community to thrive. And whereas, Burnsville is committed to innovation that supports environmental, human, and financial vitality for our community and future generations. Whereas, public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas, the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works function, including engineering, water production and distribution, sanitary sewer collection, stormwater management, transportation system, public buildings, fleet services, and parks, and natural resources. The public works professionals actively work to assess infrastructure vulnerabilities, mitigate risk, and respond to emergency situations in support of community resiliency. And whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these assets is vital, vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works professionals. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Kouts, on behalf of the city council, hereby proclaim May 19th through May 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week, and urge my fellow citizens to observe this period by acquainting themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and recognizing the contributions which city staff make each and every day for our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Residents are invited to meet with public works staff and view equipment used in our operations at the Public Works Open House scheduled for Thursday, May 23rd, from 3:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the maintenance facility, proclaimed this 21st day of May 2024. And, all right, I would like all the public works folks and deputy city managers. So we'll do it right here. And deputy city manager?
Yeah. I got your spot for you.
One, two, three, and one, two, three.
And the next proclamation is National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month. Whereas, the nonpartisan National League of Cities was founded in 1924 and is the oldest and largest organization representing the interests of more than 19,000 cities, towns, and villages across the country. And whereas, the National League of Cities works in partnership with 49 state municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies and impact local programs and operations. As the voices of cities, towns, and villages in Washington, D.C., the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislative solutions that support municipalities and has worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation. And whereas, Burnsville is a proud member of the National League of Cities and has benefited from the organization's research, technical expertise, federal advocacy, and opportunities to learn from the local government. Whereas, local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing 336 million residents with the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical, and transparent government in the world. And whereas, the City of Burnsville was incorporated in 1964 and is proudly served today by the city council and a municipal workforce of three dedicated public servants. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month in celebration of America's local government and the National League of Cities' historic centennial anniversary, proclaimed this 21st day of May 2024. Now, this next proclamation is very important, and it's something that we're proud of here in Burnsville because we have done this for quite a few years. And if I would have retired Colonel Mike Huddleston and Mrs. Huddleston to come forward, who help us with the Burnsville Yellow Ribbon recognition of students entering the military. And we are proud of those students who have made the choice to enter the military and to serve our country. Whereas, the United States military supports the freedom upon which our country was founded, and entering in the military is a noble and important career choice. Almost 2.5 million people serve in the active and reserve branches of the military. And whereas, the Burnsville Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Organization is a nonprofit volunteer organization dedicated to supporting our nation's military, which includes the local active-duty guard, reserve, and military veteran communities. Whereas, Burnsville Beyond the Yellow Ribbons volunteer forces assist active-duty military members, veterans, and their families with household chores, ranging from babysitting and cleaning to household maintenance. Whereas, Burnsville Beyond the Yellow Ribbon also connects veterans with state, local, and federal organizations who provide assistance to veterans who are looking to enter the workforce upon completion of military service. Whereas, the Burnsville and Savage communities join with the Burnsville Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Organization to honor students who choose to enter the military. And whereas, the United States Congress in 2004 passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, a special honor month to honor both those in and out of military. And now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of this city council, hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as Military Appreciation Week, with a special emphasis on students who have selected careers in the military, and urge my fellow citizens to observe this period by thanking young people in our community who have chosen to enter the military profession in support of our freedoms, health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, proclaimed this 21st day of May 2024. And Colonel, if you would come and see the proclamation. And then, we also will be recognizing the students this evening. And so, if Mayor Janet Williams would...
She had to go to another meeting.
Oh, okay.
I know, but the chief is here. Chief Rodney is here.
From Savage? Okay, so he's here. So Chief, if you want to come forward, please. Yeah, and so I'm going to have you...
Yep, okay. I'll have... Well, welcome. Good evening. I'm glad that you got your name tags properly on, right?
That was going to be confusing for a minute, but...
Yeah, but...
We get confused a lot.
Yeah. Yeah. So, good evening. My name is Mike Huddleston, and I'm the volunteer coordinator for the Burnsville Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. I'd like to start out by thanking these students for serving our community, state, and country by choosing, oops, sorry, mayor, to serve in the military. Service above self is more than just a model. It's a way of life that will continue to enrich you for the rest of your lives. Military service has an intrinsic value. It instills responsibility, dependability, and loyalty. You will cultivate your leadership skills, get to know yourself better, make new friends, acquire strengths and resiliency you never knew you had. And above all, you will build a stronger character. I'd like to thank the parents and family members who are here tonight. Thank you for trusting us to take care of your children. We know it's hard to let them go into a career that may put them in harm's way. And thank you for your love and support because it means the world to them, even though they may not act like that now. This recognition program, as the mayor alluded to, we started in 2016 when one of our longtime volunteers, retired brevet Colonel Geraldine Longfellow, and she's downstairs, asked why no one recognizes the students who are going into the military from the Burnsville High School. Now, nine years later, we have recognized over 111 students from the Burnsville High School. Also, many other students who attend area high schools are being recognized by Beyond the Yellow Ribbon organizations in Apple Valley, Eagan, Farmington, Lakeville, and Savage. We wouldn't be here tonight without the City of Burnsville, which became a Yellow Ribbon community. Do you remember what year? 2013. Were you still in school? Yeah. Oh, yeah, yep, yep. We appreciate the help and support of the city to make sure Burnsville Yellow Ribbon's mission is carried out for veterans, military members, and their families before, during, and after deployments. And I'd like to thank the many organizations gathered with us tonight, the Burnsville VFW, they're back there in the purple. You can raise your hand, Terry and Dave. Oh, VFW, oh, okay. Howard and Bob, is there somebody else too? Oh, yeah. Yep, and the Two Eagles Marine Detachment is here. The Burnsville Savage Lions, no, it's the purple. Recruiters from each branch of the service, representatives from the cities of Burnsville and Savage, and businesses in our community. We also recognize the principal of Burnsville High School. Thank you for coming. I see you once in a while as my retired job. I'm a school bus driver, so I see them out there bending the ear on kids that are supposed to get on the buses without socializing too much. So thanks for coming, sir. They are an integral part of our Yellow Ribbon network and help us do our job of supporting the military. I'd also like to thank the Savage Mayor Janet Williams. She had to leave to another meeting. The Savage Police School Resource Officer, is she here? There she is. Jacqueline Couch, okay. And Police Chief Rodney Sewer. This is your last one in this capacity, right? Yep. For attending this event. They have been here with us every year since we started this tradition, and we are sure appreciate your support. Now, enough talking, let's get to the formal recognition. Tonight, we have a bag of fun items for each student, and inside you will find a $50 gift card. It doesn't go to your brother or sister, it goes to you, from Target, as a token of appreciation from your hometown community, which supports our organization. Also, we're providing each student with a red, white, and blue honor cord to wear with your cap and gown on graduation day. This honor cord has been approved by the Burnsville High School leadership for you to wear at the graduation. We will also be giving you a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon challenge coin when I shake your hand. A challenge coin is a small medallion-like coin adorned with the emblem insignia of the presenting organization. The coins are a symbol of membership, belonging, and camaraderie. More importantly, the coins acknowledge your achievements, dedication, and exemplary service, and service as a reminder of the appreciation and respect of your peers and superiors. It is a great honor that I am happy to bestow on you tonight when you come forward. Before we call your names, we have Mayor Kouts here, the Police Chief here, Chief Sewer, to help distribute the bags, as well as the Commander of the VFW, Commander Gunderson, to help hand out the U.S. flags donated by the Burnsville VFW. As I call your name forward, stay up front until everyone is called. After the recognition program, please join us downstairs for a reception sponsored by the Burnsville Savage Lions. So, once I call your name and then you go through the gauntlet, come over here because we'll get the pictures. Yep, we'll get the pictures. So, the first one is... Is Ashley here? No? Ashley?
It would be appropriate to have either the principal or Mrs. Sexton come up and...
Yeah. Come on up, principal. Yep, all right. You ready? So this is a good thing, principal, you don't have to chew about it after you know kind of it. Okay, Ashley Gutierrez de Jesus? Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Okay, she's going into the Minnesota...
We'll have you start up here, shake hands from all the way in, and you end this way in.
Yeah, remember I said you got to go through the gauntlet first? Okay, there you go. Don't lose that.
Now you go stand here.
In the middle, so we can...
What service?
Minnesota Army National Guard, right?
Army.
I know, Cara was in the Air Force, so she's looking for Air Force people.
But I appreciate Army.
Yeah, there you go, and he does too. Coy Trent? I got to meet Coy's father. He served in... Yeah, the South Vietnam, he was in the South Vietnam Army. So there he is taking a picture. Okay, Leban is not here?
He's not here.
Okay. Svetlana? You're going in the Navy, huh? How do you pronounce your last name?
Popo.
Popo, okay. Well, that's... Roddy likes that, Popo. Okay, so then the next one.
Emmanuel is not here. He is from the Air Force, but he couldn't make it to the...
Okay, we have one Air Force, but it couldn't make it tonight.
Do we have any Marines?
Yes, we do. Kaylin? Kaylin? And how do you pronounce your last name?
Ambul.
Ambul, Kaylin Ambul. Her husband was a Marine. All right, and was that the last one? All right, so, small group, so... Come on in, guys. So... She's good, she's totally good. I get by the principal since I see him every day.
All right, ready? One, two, three. And one, two, three.
So like I said, we got a reception afterward, so downstairs.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience or online to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not an application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Anyone? Deputy City Clerk Henderson?
No, Madam Mayor.
Anybody online?
No, there isn't.
Thank you. We will move on. The next item is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager, do we have any emergency items?
Nothing from staff.
Members of the council? Okay, we'll move on. The next item is the consent agenda. This is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by... and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on a consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Deputy City Clerk Henderson, anyone online?
No, there is not.
City Manager Lindberg?
Nothing from staff.
Members of the council, okay. May I then?
Move to approve. Second?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now move on to the regular agenda, and the first item on the regular agenda is a public hearing. This public hearing is a resolution giving host approval of tax-exempt bonds for Seven Hills Preparatory Academy project. And presenting this evening is our Deputy City Manager and CFO, Jennifer Rhodey. Mrs. Rhodey, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Tonight, we have, as the mayor mentioned, a public hearing and a resolution before you giving host approval to Seven Hills Academy bonds. Last month, on April 16th, the council did adopt a resolution giving host approval for this bond issue to finance construction of their new charter school in Burnsville. There was an issue with that bond process, and they're asking tonight that the council redo that host approval. Just a little background. Investors in the Seven Hills Academy bonds for their rich facilities facility are requiring the school to consolidate and restructure all of its long-term debt into one issue. This combined refunding and the new component is larger than that which we which the council previously approved, and that's why we're back tonight. Bonds to be issued total 29 million, of which 11.6 million is allocable to the Burnsville site. Again, these are not Burnsville bonds. They're not requesting us to issue bonds. These don't impact our total debt or debt capacity or credit rating, but because they are located within the city of Burnsville, those because the facility is located within the city of Burnsville, they're asking for host approval. So next steps, tonight, the public hearing and updated resolution is in front of you tonight for your approval. City's Bond Council has reviewed the information, and I do believe there are there is a representative from Seven Hills here tonight as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Deputy City Manager, CFO Rhodey? Thank you. This is the second part of this rodeo. Okay, this is a public hearing. I will now open a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Deputy City Clerk, is there anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve. Second?
There's a motion and a second, and I will take the vote, but I just want to let the folks from the academy that my my vote will still stay the same. It will be as it was the last time because I don't agree with the change in our land use and zoning for this particular use. So, there is a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And the Clerk has his division of the House. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. The next item is the Economic Development Commission 2024 Work Plan. And presenting the work plan, and it's good to see Commissioner Brooms, who is here to present the work plan. Good evening, and thank you for being with us.
Thanks. Thanks for having me. I don't know if you all, like, online can hear the rain on the roof, but I hope everybody's staying dry. My shoes got a little bit damp. My name is Kaylin Brooms. I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Commission. I'm going to be taking you through our 2024 work plan. Just a quick three slides. It'd be great, council, if you can give me any feedback or questions that you have as I go through each slide. Otherwise, I'll be pretty brief. So first, we are working on ensuring the stability of Burnsville Center and the County Road 42 corridor. We're also working on improving the image of ISD 191 and the city. We're also working on continuing development within the heart of the city, enhancing existing housing and commercial programs, and then continuing the city's position as a regional destination. Does the council have any comments on this slide?
Yeah, I didn't see. Okay, Councilmember.
I like about improving the image of 191. Are you working with the school district on that as well, or?
That's a great question. We just talked really in depth about that particular part of the plan two meetings ago, and there's quite a bit that came out of that in terms of where we think we need to go in order to be properly addressing it. I don't know if Beth has any additions to that, but I don't have it in front of me in terms of where we came out with it. We do have the the. Sorry, the transcript from the previous meeting, if we want to touch base about that later.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Chair Brooms, it was one of the things that I highlighted simply because we have no control over what happens with the strategies that the school district have with regard to their marketing and their image.
Sure.
Ours can only be a supportive role in any of that. And so I'm wondering what that's going to look like as you all work through that.
You know, we were all wondering that, too. This is a pre-existing economic development strategic plan.
And I questioned it back then as well.
Well, I have really great news for you. We have here on this next slide, the very bottom item here is the Economic Development Strategic Plan update, in which we will be looking at many of these items and deciding whether it's the city's place to be working on them or not. But as it stands, given that we're working with the previously approved work plan, we do still have that on our agenda.
Great. So it'll be nice to have you all dive deep into that, and and I like that you're all working on an update on the Economic Development Strategic Plan, which is also going to be the framework. I think you're all working with StanTech on that particular item, and so thank you for all that you do in that regard and doing all of that heavy lifting up front.
Thanks. Yeah, I know we have quite a few new people on the on the commission who were not involved in creating the previous plan. I'm not even sure if any of us were, so we're all pretty excited to dive into updating it. The other items on this slide are working with Open to Business. We just had a really great presentation from them two meetings ago. Also, working on attending ribbon cuttings as community representatives and city representatives, and then doing more training. Any other comments on these? These ones, okay. All right, this is my last slide. We are going to be working on reviewing financing applications for city funds. We've been getting some really great training on what funds are available to the city so that we'll be able to go ahead and start doing that this year. We are also working on our Grow MN Burnsville Chamber partnership, and then city business retention and expansion programs. Any other questions or comments from the council?
No, you have a lot of work to do. And I thank you all. Please extend our appreciation to the members of the Economic Development Commission for all of that work because it's a lot of work. I'm anxious to see what you're going to bring back with regard to financing applications for city funds. I think it's going to be interesting to see what you all have with that particular item.
Great, well, I'll be glad to update. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, thank you. Members of the council, I need a motion to accept the Economic Development Commission's plan.
Move to approve.
Hold a second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you so much. The next item is a resolution authorizing amendment to the sub-grant agreement with Pacifica Square Burnsville. And presenting is our Deputy City Manager, Community Development Director, Mr. Jeff Thompson. Mr. Thompson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you recall, back in 2020, we were awarded a $1.1 million grant from Dakota County that was administered through the Dakota County CDA to support redevelopment efforts in Burnsville. And then in 2022, at the end of 2022, there was a deadline approaching for use of those funds for a project that was consistent with our grant application. And the city requested an extension for use of those funds, and that was granted by the Dakota County CDA with two conditions on that. One, that we identified a project by May of 2023. And secondly, that we expended the funds or we received distribution of the funds from the county by November of 2023. And we have met those deadlines. We met those deadlines in 2023 and received the dispersment of the Alf Grant from the county and have received those at the city. With that, in May, on May 16th, the council awarded the grant, the full $1.1 million grant to the Pacifica Burnsville project. And then, as part of that, authorized the sub-grant agreement with the terms for the financial assistance for that project. The project was always comprised of two construction phases, which I'll talk in a little bit about. And then, the original agreement was always structured such that we would receive dispersments of the funds from the county to meet the November of 2023 deadline because they had incurred the eligible expense for acquiring the land, but we would hold those funds until the full project had been completed. So if both phases of construction were completed to ensure that we were getting the project done to support because that's what the funds were being used for, for the whole scope of the project. Pacifica has submitted an application to us to amend the existing sub-grant agreement, and there are really two changes to that agreement that I'll walk through. The first is just a change to the timelines of construction. Phase one is under construction. We were in the facility probably more than a little bit more than a month ago. So we've seen ongoing construction of the and that's the interior remodel of the lower level of the former Gordman space. So that that project is well underway, expected to be completed by October 31st of this year, full completion of that phase one by October 31st of this year. Phase two, which is, as you recall, was always the exterior improvements, is planned to start now in October 1st, by October 1st of this year. And then the amended terms would require the full completion of that by June 30th of next year. So just pushing out the construction timelines on the project a bit beyond what was originally anticipated. The second requested change is to really refine or change the scope of the phase two improvements. And so you'll recall that the original project had a small 15,000-square-foot addition on the building really where the entrance was to add a little additional square footage at the time. Although they're different entities, the Windfall Group didn't own them all. And so one thing that's changed since the original sub-grant agreement is their acquisition of the mall, which has changed their need and scope of wanting to add on additional square footage to the space. And then they have, just to show you, made some revisions to the exterior design of that. Really, the exterior enhancements go to where the entrance is to the new grocery store and food hall. And then they continue to show kind of outdoor patio to serve the food hall and the tenants, and then enhance landscaping, both at the building entrance, but we are also asking and requiring in the sub-grant agreement, enhance landscaping throughout the property that's owned by Pacifica Burnsville, particularly all those parking islands that exist because they're in need of a refresh and update with new landscaping. So those are the two changes. The city's Development Tools Policy, although the primary purpose of the assistance was never job creation, it was always to support investments in Burnsville Center, a priority area, and to support growth in tax base. And the exterior improvements, our Development Tools Policy still requires a minimum job creation and wage. And so we've talked to them about that. Ultimately, the amended agreement does not make any changes to that job wage and job goal. It stays at 10 jobs at 200% of the state's minimum wage. And so that remains consistent despite the project changes. We did notify the county about the change, although the sub-grant agreement is just between the city and the applicant. We did notify the county and the CDA, and they did indicate they don't have any concerns with the proposed amendments. So with that, the policy consideration for the council is whether the amendments are consistent with our Development Tools Policy, and staff is recommending approval of the resolution and the amendment. So, Mayor, happy to stand for questions. I know if the council has questions of Pacifica Burnsville, because Christina Lee is here tonight as well.
So one of the things that I understood is that the food hall was going to be open second quarter? 888? Yeah. Mrs. Lee, can you come to the podium, please? Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Hi there.
So now, is the food hall going to be open the second quarter?
July 1st?
July 1st, so it's.
No, not by the July 1st date. I believe that we have had delays for that opening of the food hall as well. I believe it may be hopefully by September, August or September. I was in the food hall today, saw that the equipments were there. That was one of the causes of the delay. The Ensign Market side as well. Part of that was delay in shipping of equipment, but they're all in. I saw the refrigerations in places now. I wasn't sure, like, a month ago, they were not placed, but now they are. That's that's my current understanding. And we are still going to go full force with getting this project done because a lot has has been spent on the whole project. You know, we have tenants waiting to open in the food hall, and they have been publicized, you know, in the news already. So we're all pushing for this to happen ASAP. Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so one of the things is I see that so the Burnsville Asian Marketplace came online at the same time as Eden Prairie, and Eden Prairie went ahead of Burnsville. And now you have another one that's going up in a northern suburb. Is that in?
And I I'm thrilled, to be honest. I'm very thrilled that there are more.
But when it says, so from where I sit?
Yes.
I see a lot of activity taking place, and they're going to be opening soon, at least what we read in the paper. And is that North Town or is that?
North Town, I believe. It's North Town.
Yes. And then here it is in Burnsville, and we kept getting delays. So I am thinking this. They have the same challenges with delays in equipment. So is that a more priority than Burnsville?
Actually, I think part of the delay also is the purchase of the second part of the Burnsville investment. We, as the partners in both, so we were we had to plan differently after we purchased the center of the Burnsville Center. And that plan, that's quite an investment as well. So then we had to reposition our our plans to make sure that we can bring the tenants from the outside extension inside. We want to, you know, make sure all that's in place and build this together as a whole. And so that did delay us. That's the the project delay for us as well.
So I'm going to hold you all accountable?
Yes.
For making this happen?
We will.
Because, you know, this is what, the third delay that you've come before us and asking for an amendment? So from my perspective?
Yeah.
Get it done because we're going to hold you accountable.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am, yes. We'd love.
I really do not like seeing where a lot of the investment is going into the other communities, and Burnsville seems to be the stepchild. I mean, that's just the way that I see all of this.
I'm asking you to back off a little, Madam Mayor. They purchased our mall after they purchased the original property.
No, I understand.
So I think we need to be a little less critical because I'm very thankful that they stepped up and purchased the entire main body of the mall
after their initial purchase and investments. And that does change the dynamics of things. And so it's not it's not an apples-to-apples comparison to these other projects that you're calling for. So please, respect what they've done.
And and they all know, I talked with them about all of this. And so, but the thing is, I do see and read where there's a lot of investment. And we've talked about this. And so it's it's, I'm really appreciative. I've met with Eddie and me just a month ago, when he came into town. So everybody understands how all of this is. But I, and I appreciate all the work that's going on that Marshall and the team is doing. But it's, you know, the community needs to see some movement. You you all see the what's happening internally, but the community doesn't see that.
Yes, perhaps we could, at this time, maybe be a little bit more public about the new projects that are new tenants that are coming in. That's one of the plans that you'll be seeing that will come out. We are going to finish because we never give up. And we need, we have a wonderful group of investor partners who have a lot of experience from different walks of life. I I mean, different types of businesses. So I do have the confidence that we will put together. We just have to, we had to do it smartly so that we can handle all the new changes and investments. So I apologize for the delay as as most constructions have these delays. But our our investment also change, and we want to be able to attract numerous, numerous types of businesses to this Burnsville Center and make it an international destination. Really, our vision is to make this mall go internationally known so that when we have events, we will have people from all over the different states to fly in. One of the events that happened in the New Year was like the Vietnamese New Year, just one. But we've packed it. And I think that we're also beginning to have more events of such where a lot of other minority groups can use our center for this gathering of space. And we would love to also incorporate all the mainstream strong businesses that are out there currently. We'd love to have them come, stay and come back and build further. Another vision we also have is to entice real estate developers to take on that space that this parking space behind the, by overlooking the lake area. So there's a lot of moving parts, and we are ready for the work to put the projects together. It does take time, so I apologize on that on the other overall bigger aspect of the mall. But for the food hall and Ensign Market, that is certain to open. So we just, we just need to move faster. I do understand. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Thank you for everything. Yeah. We appreciate your partnership.
We really appreciate all your support through all this time as well. And just am so grateful for the support in the grant that you've all approved last time to for us because it really means a lot. And I, and I love that you all made us feel so welcome. That's, thank you
Thank you.
from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, members of the council, if there are no questions or comments, a motion is appropriate to.
Move to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you. The next item is the ordinance amending city council and mayor's salary. And presenting this evening is our human resource director, Mr. Mike Tracy. Mr. Tracy, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am here to present a proposed ordinance amendment regarding city council salaries. So just a little bit of a background. Title I, Chapter 5, Section 11 of City Code establishes the salaries for both mayor and city council. And per statute, city council may amend ordinance to increase their annual salaries during election years. Ordinance must be adopted before the general election and then goes into effect January 1st of the following year. So on the April 9th work session, council directed staff to amend ordinance, which proposes an increase to the mayor's annual salary to 2,000 per month and city council member's salary to 1,500 per month. And again, that, per statute, this amendment would take effect January 1st, 2025, if passed. And yeah, with that, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions for Director Tracy? If no questions, then a motion is in order.
Move to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion. There's a, there's a descending vote. Okay. And the clerk has the division of the house. Okay, very good. Thank you. The next item is an ordinance amending the fee schedule. Our deputy city manager, Community Development Director, Mr. Jeff Thompson, is presenting. Mr. Thompson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you may recall, back in October of last year, we had a, the president of the Winterwood Gardens bring some concerns to the council, one of which was how we really administer fees for very specific work, which is works that are, yeah, improvements that a homeowners association is doing on exterior common elements. So after that, we've spent some time looking at our fee schedule and how we, and how our fees are charged for these types of project. And we are recommending a change to how we administer and charge for those types of permits. Quick background, we're subject to Minnesota rules on this, and they state that there are fees just have to be commensurate with the service we provide. And from our approach in making recommendations on fees, we want to make sure that they're reasonable, they're fair, and they're proportionate to the cost of the service that we're providing to the community when we are inspecting and administering these permits. And generally, most of our permits, like the bigger, the bigger projects are typically charged on a valuation basis. But there are fees, such as residential electrical permits, where we charge a flat fee, which is intended to reduce the cost of the permit, than would be charged on a on a on a valuation framework. So we looked at a number of what other cities are doing on this, as well as kind of how we administer the service. And so today, what we do is we just charge $80. What our fee schedule says is for residential, for minor work in residential properties, it's $80. And so how we've administered that is $80 per unit on a townhome association. Given that there is some economies of scale of doing these these projects together and inspecting the projects together, we're recommending that we add a new fee into the fee schedule, which would reduce the fee for homeowners associations of townhomes on common elements for electrical to half that cost, to $40 per unit. And the real reason for that is kind of how we do the inspections. One, it is, there is less time than than a full residential unit for each for each unit or for one residential inspection for each unit. We're really inspecting on a per-building basis. So for the Winterwood Gardens project, it's about 10 buildings. And so we will be doing a minimum of 10 inspections on those projects. We'll go out on a per-building basis as the project is completed. Oftentimes, we'll be out there more than those 10 times as if there's corrections that are needed. But that's so that we're not waiting till the whole project is done before we're doing an inspection and then finding an issue that needs to be corrected and has to be kind of done throughout the whole work. So we're out there anywhere between 10 and 20 times while we're doing these permits. For 10 unit, for this complex in particular, that's about a $2,400 fee for the 60 units. And we think that's commensurate with the service that's provided. We are recommending additionally one minor housekeeping change to the ordinance, and it's really just for clarity and transparency for the community. As I said, we charge, most building permits are on a sliding scale based on valuation. Our fee schedule today puts like a summary in of those fees. And we're just recommending that, so that it's clear and transparent for those that are reading the fee schedule, we just put in the whole sliding scale into the fee schedule. So no changes to the fees we're charging. It's just making sure that it's clear for the public and for the community. So with that, the council's consideration is whether you support the amendments to the fees and charges schedule. It does require an amendment through ordinance, so we are recommending the council then adopt the ordinance revising those two fees and charges that I outlined. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Deputy City Manager Thompson? There are no questions. May I have a motion, please, to adopt the ordinance?
Move to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening, and a motion to adjourn is in order. There's a motion.
Second.
Miss Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us.